All right, so, welcome to the June School Board meeting. We're going to start with our public hearing. The purpose is to accept and expend the $55,202 in impact fees for the repeater going on to the building to support emergency situations. So I guess whether anybody has any questions about that? Okay. Do we have? I just asked for questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't know if you might ask or...
Do any of you guys have any questions about accepting the impact fees? No? So can I close the public?
Just to make a...
We have to vote?
Yeah.
Vote to close or vote to accept them?
Vote to close and then accept them in our public...
In our meeting? Okay. All right, then, would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the public hearing is closed. Do you want us to make that motion to accept them now, right now? Okay, and then we'll move on to the meeting.
Yep, accept and expend.
Accept and expend. So, I'll make the motion to accept and expend the $55,202 in impact fees for the emergency project.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, now we can move on to the School Board meeting. Would you like to do the plate?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So how was Saturday?
Amazing. Yeah, it was great. It was my first time, too.
And I heard that you stole the show.
Well, I...
Perhaps from Nate Jones, I heard that you stole the show.
Yeah, I brought a ukulele and threw some Beatle lyrics into my speech. It all kind of went... It was the right message, you know? And obviously, most of the awards were individuals. People were accepting awards that they were given, so they were thanking a lot of individuals. But accepting it on our school, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our school. So we had a big showing there.
Yeah.
About 33 people there from our school.
Awesome.
And each of you have a School of Excellence pin.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, it was a great night.
Awesome.
A lot of fun.
It was good.
We got a big old check.
Yes.
A little check and then a big check.
And then a big check.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And a big banner, too.
Awesome.
It looks great.
I actually haven't driven by the front of the school. Is a banner outside yet?
No, I brought it in from my car to this morning, and I put it in our lobby. We've got to find a good place to put it.
Awesome.
I don't know if it's weather-worthy, so we'll find a good place to hang it.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, I know, it looks great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, so, we will open public comment at 6:05. Does anybody have public comments?
Liz Faria, I don't know what a repeater is. I was wondering about the lockdown that was at the school the other day and whether the security measures that you had made were helpful with that at all.
So we're... I don't think we're going to get into what a repeater... I don't...
We can simply say a repeater helps with communication outside of the building.
It's a communication tool.
Okay. So was that helpful when you had the lockdown?
The repeater wasn't part of the lockdown.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I was just...
Okay.
I happened to be going by and parents were frantic, so it wasn't that great. And then I heard Chris Gray, I don't know if it's true or not, that the packaging question had been there for some time, like a day and a half, and I was just questioning that whole...
Yeah, I mean, we haven't talked about it as a board yet.
I don't know anything about it.
What'd you say?
I only know what was, like, posted on Facebook and what I got in my email. We haven't talked about it.
Yeah, we haven't talked about it. I don't know if we want to... I mean, I think probably board members have questions about it anyway, so do we want to have that conversation now or do we want to wait?
So if you're going to talk about specific safety measures during that time, we would do that in non-public.
Okay.
On how the school responded safety-wise.
Okay.
To our plan, because that should be a non-public discussion.
Okay.
General questions.
Okay. The only... I actually did not get comments from parents that were frantic at all. But the only question that I got, or concern that I got, was the fact that a phone call was made to read an email. And this particular parent was like, "I couldn't get to my email, like, I'm on the road all the time," and so I wished that the message from the email had been read in the phone call. So that was really the only feedback that was like of, like, would want to have done different.
Yeah, we got that same parent shared that with Dr. Asbell and myself. We were outside during that time. We did bring that back to Dr. Ryan as a way for future advancement.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have... No. My kids happened to not be here that day, so I was not... And you weren't either, so, yeah. Yeah. Okay. So public comment will be open until 6:35. Approval of the minutes. We'll just start with you, Brian.
I just had one question about the Section 4.3. I said, I don't know if you did this or not, Letty, Mr. Bedard, so your...
My father was not here that night.
Will email Ms. Mari before the end of the night.
He did not email Ms. Mari.
And I know I said I was going to, and I did that night, so I don't know if you did or not. It was supposed to be you.
Oh, I did not.
You did not, so that should be Mr. Duffy will email? So the mister was correct, it turned out.
It's the wrong mister.
And then I had a question on Section 4.4 at the top of page four. There's the discussion about the... Whether there was... Whether the school should have a generator? And I thought the discussion got a little bit more into, you know, there were outages, but they're really... They're a rare occurrence, and there was some further closure on that? I have recollection of it.
We have a small generator for the...
Kitchen.
Kitchen.
Right.
So I think that might have been it, that I just had added handy. That was all I had.
Anybody else have anything?
Yes. In 5.1, 2, 3, 4, 5... So first of all, I'm once again mister. Which I actually don't remember if I made that motion or not, but I don't... I don't think we can approve the release of the 10,000 impact fees, right?
Yeah, we could, because those were ours. Yeah.
Then I don't underst... Then that's the wrong number. I guess I don't understand between that motion and the...
Oh, no, 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 that was the police one. That was to approve to accept them, right? Not to release. Right? Is that what your question is? Should it be accept them?
My question is, that paragraph looks... Is funny, and I don't remember... I didn't go back and watch the meeting. Because they haven't offered us the 10,000 impact fees yet.
Yeah, they had. You and I went and met with the police chief.
I... But like, they haven't handed us a check. That's... I didn't know if we have to, like, we did with this thing. Like, once there's an actual physical check, we have to approve it? Or if it's... Or we could do it ahead of time?
No, we did it in that meeting.
I believe that Karen said that they're going to pay the vendor directly. So we... You'll see, we reduced the encumbrance on here by 10,000.
Yep.
Because our assumption is the town's going to pay the vendor directly.
It's on our agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can leave that there if that's what we did. I guess the question is, if that's what we did, that I was confused... Maybe we should add town impact fees? And then in the next paragraph, put school impact fees? Just to differentiate between the two? Or not?
Makes sense.
I know we didn't have the exact number for the second one at the time.
Because it talks about two impact fees.
Two different ones, yep. Mm-hmm. So for the top one, say the town impact fees.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. I think that was it.
I had two, a couple things. Under the financials, where Letty asked to... Where's the comment about you asking about the...
The way that we encumber?
Yes.
It's the second paragraph in 5.1.
Oh, okay. Like, I would love for us to go back to the recording and actually put in the meeting minutes what she asked for, just because I think it would be helpful for us to track that we're making that adjustment.
Yes.
And I couldn't remember what it was specifically that... I remember the conversation, but...
Right.
And then, under the lunch program update, I think, Liz, you were late, and so we let you speak then. But because it was a public comment, I didn't know... Like, having a public comment in the middle of the conversation is out of...
Yeah. So do you note, like, public? Do you note it?
Either note it or perhaps move it to public comment. It's like the second-to-last paragraph.
I think maybe just saying a public comment was made by...
Yeah, that would be fine with me. A public comment was made by...
Liz's name is spelled wrong.
The last name is spelled wrong. I...
I did.
And then, in the next paragraph for 6.2, Assistant Principal Gallo and Aaron, can we add Aaron's last name?
Larkin.
Larkin. Anybody want to make a motion to accept them?
Make a motion to accept as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, reports from the chair. So, safety and security?
No update.
No update. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, so we will go into non-public tonight to provide our feedback for this year. But we are meeting with Esther very early, on June 21st. And that is going to be a goal-setting workshop, so that our goals are set and approved before the academic year starts. And so, going to that meeting, if there was anything... We don't need to, like, wordsmith goals that we want to see that will happen there, but anything that you guys would, in general, like to see in those goals, I would love that feedback. And we can have that conversation now.
I feel like we've had those conversations a lot of times in many of our meetings already.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything new for me.
To me, I just think that, like, something that would be part of, like, the whole communication and is like, Chris is our rep from the SAU, but just like, having a presence in all of the districts as like the superintendent, especially incoming, would be something that...
Having...
And like Esther's was at the... Eddie's present, like, she's been around, so I don't think that's like an issue. It's just like something that I think would be...
Highlight as something that we think is important, yeah.
I don't know if you guys agree?
I do. I think she talked about that in her...
Mm-hmm.
In some thing, some presentation or interview.
So having her present?
Yeah, just like a presence.
Yes.
And it's not in every, like...
Yep.
But just something.
Yeah, I'm like 100% certain that that will...
Like, there's...
Can you... We do agree that will be some... There will be something around that.
Yeah, we're working on something to present to you all about that, to change it a little bit different.
The other thing that we've talked about, and that I am fairly certain that Esther is in agreement on, that the goals will look different going forward. There will be, like, district goals that Esther's team will be responsible for, but there will also be, like, personal goals in the goals going forward. That will be more in, sort of, line with some of the things that the community provided in feedback about what they want, as far as, like, what does leadership look like and how does, you know, those things? So I think that the plan is for it to look different.
Yeah.
I was not at the joint board meeting on the 22nd, so I think Andy provided that update. But, you know, the plan is for us to have those goals set by the beginning of the school year, and that we will meet as a committee once a month, always. And that, you know, that responsibility will shift over the course of the year, depending on what's going on, from goal setting to goal check-ins, to how do we want to make... How do we want to do this evaluation? But that, once a quarter, Esther will be part of that meeting, so that there'll be regular check-ins. The committee, and I also, once again, believe Esther has requested this and is in agreement with it, is there will be like a 360 evaluation, and it will be totally out in the open, that it's happening every year, and that there's no sort of secrecy to the whole process. So that is my update, unless, do I... Any of you guys have anything else that you would want to see in those goals?
We can put... We can move me further down if you want.
I'll move you down.
Because it's relatively complex, and although there are not as many policies as last week or last month.
There's still enough.
There's still a good number of them.
It gets spicy.
Okay.
It's going to really melt my brain.
Set the table by saying at our last meeting, we need to talk about next year, looking at maybe five policies per meeting, keep the number a lot lower, so...
Okay.
That's it.
All right, so we'll come back to that, which then goes to board member queries. So does anybody have anything before we let the select board go? For any contacts?
I had like a very quick one, is that there were some questions about the slide becoming a mini-slide? Is that on purpose? Or was it...
So I can give you an update on that. So the slide, the length of the slide that was there originally, they no longer make.
Okay.
So when they gave the quote, they said it would be a bit shorter, but not half the size. So I am in contact with the company right now, because we did not agree to half the size. We didn't, but that was kind of clarification when that PO came in and it was approved.
It was a little shorter.
Yeah.
We needed more.
So done some work with facilities when we're looking at the quotes and looking at actually sizing. So right now, that's what we have, so I have left a message for the company to talk about solutions. I did get a price that I did not believe is accurate, to replace it for a slide that would be bigger. So right now, that's what we have.
Okay.
Because we're also on hold from another slide that got broke about two weeks ago, replacing that piece of that slide. So that is the reason behind it. No mini-slide, it's just that the original slide...
Oh, I heard about it.
I'm sure you did.
By all of my clients.
I learned a lot about Typhoon Cyclones, Cyclones, and there's a lot of different slides, so...
They weren't happy.
Yeah.
Did the kids not like the slide slide?
Oh, man. Come on, Brian.
It was right there.
What, um... Did the old slide go away?
It's... No.
It's out there.
Is it still out there? Can't pure...
It is, it is.
Learn more about...
Is this what you went and got your doctorate for?
Not, but I feel like I could do a presentation.
But here you are.
Come on, this is important. It's slides.
Who needs competency-based education, right?
A cutting class and be like, "Listen, you think you're going to be, like, managing really important things, you're going to be researching slides."
Anything else?
Thanks for that question.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to demonstrate your knowledge. That's it.
That's all I got.
All right. You guys are up.
I'll have this that went around my email. Everybody has that already? Okay. Does have yours? Yeah.
All right. I'm Jen Jones. I'm here to speak officially on behalf of the Select Board, and I brought our town clerk, Daphne Wass, and our town moderator, Dick Chamberlain, with me as well, if anybody has questions for them. I asked Allison if we could come talk to you guys, because I know you previously had discussed the schedule for the upcoming year and the discussion about whether elections could take place on school property. And those discussions happened after we sent a letter from the Select Board to the board, but it didn't have a ton of detail in it in terms of, like, numbers and exact ask. And so I felt that it was worthwhile asking the board to potentially reconsider your prior vote not to hold all elections here, with some additional information that maybe we could provide and some questions we might be able to answer. So I thank Daphne for making this document that you received by email. I think it shows a couple of things. For people listening on video, it shows the attendance that we've had, number of voters per election from 2018 through this year, 2023. And we've definitely seen a trend overall of town elections, specifically a higher number of voters. We peaked at 1,193 voters last year, and then we had a snowstorm this year, some of you may remember. So our numbers went down a little bit. And one of the things that I wanted to point out also is that, I think everybody knows the general election is generally very highly attended, and we can have upwards of almost 3,000 voters. That compares to about, you know, 1,000 voters that come to town election. What I wanted to point out here is that the additional asks that we had made were for state primaries and presidential primaries. And when you look at the attendance of those, those generally are actually sort of in the middle between town and general. So as things stand now, for us to have town elections here, but then primaries at the rec would be actually having larger elections in a smaller space. So the Select Board very strongly would like to have all of our elections in the same place for continuity and for easy community understanding. And we also wanted to point out that this particular upcoming year is an anomaly that only happens once every presidential cycle, in terms of the number of elections per year. So we can have as few as one election a year, or as many as four-ish elections a year. And it just so happens that when we made this ask of you, it happened to be for a year that was going to be the heaviest possible number of elections. So I definitely wanted to stress that that is not what would happen year over year. And in fact, when you look at the lower part of the email, it specifies which asks we're making of you for which calendar year, school years. So 2024, next year, encompasses two different school years. And our ask right now would be to add the presidential primary on, which would be spring of next year. So in the 23-24 school year, by the time you get to the state primary, that would be in the following school year. So it'd be one additional day for elections next school year, one the following year. The third year out, there would be no additional days required, because that's the nadir, the low year for elections. And then the year after that, there would be one additional. So in general, it's zero to one extra days per year, based on the fact that the school is already closed for general elections and town elections. So we really, from a numerical perspective, would really like to ask you to reconsider those, that one day on those three calendar years. And just from a, you know, personal perspective, I was here for, I think, 14 hours on the last election that we did have here, when there was a snowstorm. It went so much better than the one at the rec. And part of what I want you guys to understand is there are statutes that regulate how we are supposed to check people in, and it's based on how many voters you anticipate. And so when we're at the rec, we really do not have room, when you walk in, to have more than maybe two check-in stations. And by statute, for some of these elections, we need up to like four or more, so we need to chop the alphabet up into smaller sections to reduce lines. Because when you just have the A through, you know, K and L through M or whatever, it's just like, it backs way up. And so we are really limited in how we can do that in the rec building, whereas here, we have that whole big part when you first walk in, that we could have many, many more check-ins. I was also so thankful with the snowstorm that people were waiting inside, or they literally would have been waiting outside in the blizzard, which was what would have occurred at the rec. And I know Dick had mentioned to me that he... One of his concerns is traffic. I know when we recently had the community event at the rec about people's concerns about the rec and ideas for the rec, one of the main concerns was the traffic issues, the safety issues, the turning in and out of the rec. That's just one additional benefit to potentially having the elections here. So from a numerical perspective, kind of a statutory perspective, a safety perspective, and then one thing that I had included in my email that I'm sure you guys read, was that we did have a pretty significant election error that occurred last fall in our election. And part of that error, when we did kind of a root cause analysis discussion, was that there really was not sufficient room to process absentee ballots in the rec building, and we had none of those problems when we were here in a much bigger space. So we hope with some additional information, if you guys have questions for me or Daphne or Dick, we are happy to answer them, but we hope you might consider giving us those three days over the next four school years to make elections work better for everyone in town. Questions for me first, or for these guys?
So a question I had was like, for the February 2024, when is that date released? Like, because when I tried to look it up before the meeting, it said like February 6, but New Hampshire doesn't want it.
I think they're fighting the whole first-in-the-nation thing out right now, right?
So like, is that...
Is there a deadline?
I don't know. I think that historically what's happened is the other states figure out what they're doing, and then we bump up.
Go first.
But with everything that's going on in the state, it's kind of a, we're not sure. It's generally the second... It's almost always the second Tuesday of February.
So they would switch it to the first, just to be first?
They could switch it to the first, or we end up with the third? And I would think that we need to find that out very quickly. I think the state is concerned about that.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yeah. That's the only date that we're unsure of.
Will that be uncertain in future years, or is it just this year while they figure out?
I think it's just this year, till they figure out what are we doing.
Okay. Although the first-in-the-nation fights kind of seem to happen...
Happen every single time.
Seem to happen a lot, so...
I would imagine.
It could theoretically happen again, I would think.
If you listen to our Secretary of State, he's claiming we are going first, so...
But is that... Is there a possibility that there are separate primaries by party, right? Because if we go first for Republicans, we're not punished in any way, we don't lose delegates. If we go first for Democrats, we lose delegates. So that's not on the table, right?
I think that's just discussions that are ongoing, is how would that all be worked out?
So there's a possibility, I mean...
The days would split.
That there are two primary days.
Would be kind of unfortunate for the state, but yeah, I think that's a possibility.
But that would like split the number in half, or in whatever.
Yeah, I think... I think we would probably have a contingency plan that didn't involve the school if that were to happen, because that's, I mean, that wouldn't... You can't plan for that in advance. Yeah.
I'd like to say a little...
Come on up.
A little more about my concern about the traffic.
You guys all know Dick Chamberlain, I bet? Here, I'll turn the mic over to you. Here, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you. I'm really concerned about the entrance, entering and exiting onto Route 125. Route 125 has increasingly, month by month, year by year, become more and more congested. I'm on the Police Facilities Committee, and I hear John, our chief, talking about his concerns about the traffic on 125 and the accidents on 125. Turning in and coming out is scary. It's scary. In fact, I, I go into gigantic, gigantic park and aim my car towards the entrance and go across the road when there's nobody over there and nobody over there. Somebody is going to get hurt, somebody's going to get killed. And a lot of the people that come to vote are people who, by and large, don't come to the rec center for anything else. And consequently, they're not that familiar with how to deal with getting in and getting out. So, so I have a double concern. I have a concern about the out-of-doors in terms of getting in and getting out. And I have a concern about the fact that increasingly, we're finding it very, very tight when we've got the larger numbers of people inside. So it's pretty, it's pretty simple from my view, viewpoint, those are my two concerns.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, because of lunches, there's no way we can do, I mean, there's no way we could like have people enter and exit through a back door and keep them separated from the rest?
I wouldn't, safety-wise, I would never-
Because they can carry guns into the, they can carry guns and shoot it to voting.
Vote, and you can't.
And we don't have a bathroom attached to the gym?
You have to have a bathroom when you vote?
For the workers?
I mean, there's a lot of people here.
You're here for what, 14 hours?
I mean, it's just safety-wise, like not being able to let the people-
Yeah, it's less lunch and P E, which we've, you know.
Yeah, I mean-
It's more the amount of people coming into the, the school area.
I mean, you can't have all that traffic and kids out with recess. I mean, there's a lot of-
You can't lock the front door.
Yeah.
What happens with that, so then we just like move around our school days?
Yeah, I mean, so to me, there's a couple of issues. Like, first of all, personally, I think we've already voted on and published our calendar for next year. So I think that that's one issue, and I am not supportive of opening it for the next academic year, because we've already published our PD days, we've already agreed to them, we've already put that out there. Like, going forward, I hear the concern. To me, there's a couple of things. Like, first, we as a board, our number one goal is keep students at the center of all decision-making. That's our responsibility. And to me, less school is not keeping students at the first, so having an extra day where the students don't come. Pushing the students to have an additional day at the end of the year versus all other schools is not student-centered. Not allowing our teachers to have PD days with the rest of the district, which is what we moved to this year with the calendar that we published, is not in the best interest of our students. I don't think it's in the best interest of our students to have people coming in and out while they're here. And so I think like, it's a bigger issue, it's a bigger conversation that has to be had about how, you know, I touched base with Andy Hare today to see how East Kingston does it, because I know they do vote. I asked him specifically about the February election. We went back and forth, but then I haven't heard back from him about how they handle the February election.
They have school in session when they're voting, right?
No, he said most often they don't. Most often they don't. But he didn't say they never do. So some days they do.
There's been times in our smaller elementary schools that hold elections in their gymnasiums where students are in session.
In session.
And this is February, so it's not like we can do P E outside.
Right, but you wouldn't want kids outside with that kind of traffic. If you've got 3,000 people coming through the school to vote, you don't want the kids outside.
Well-
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of heading in a direction where we hold school and have the elections. I'm looking at February 2024, and I hope you don't mind me just chiming in, we have back-to-back early releases, which are designated for parent conferences. If one of those early releases was changed to a full day of conferences, I'm wondering if the board would entertain being allowed conferences, which isn't student-led conferences.
So that was my other, as I was thinking about this today, that was my other, right? That's, that's the reasonable solution. I think it's unreasonable for us to ask our teachers to do 18 conferences in one day. And I think that that was part of our conversation, when we had this conversation a month or two ago, right?
But they're doing it in the fall?
Yeah, it would be, it would be back to back-
Those were different, those were goal-setting and-
There's two back-to-back early releases, so it'd be, you know, have an early release and then get rid of the other one, and then have the other one a conference day.
Right. But you had said that the teachers didn't want to do conferences all in one day.
Right, that would be a day and a half.
They'd have, not even keep, but have to-
Keeping one early release and one full day.
Right, no, it's on February 1st and 8th, both of those are early releases.
Right.
So if the second or third, whatever that is, the third, second became a-
The, the one that's in the fall is one day.
Right. So, but then- But that was goal-setting with students leading them, which is a little bit different.
Yes.
But we'd lose a half-day of school that way.
I don't-
Instead of a full day, is what you're saying?
Yep. I don't have a good reference point. Is it common for all of the parents to schedule their conferences during the school day, or do some of them make arrangements to meet at another time?
Most of them do it.
We try to, we try to put out a schedule where we can fit as many as possible in, during the release time.
During, like, there's, every 15 minutes, there's, like, you sign up for a slot.
Let's say all the slots are filled out.
But do people do that?
Yes.
Okay.
The teachers certainly are amenable, if you can't, to do it at other times, but I, I don't know.
Absolutely.
But, but the majority of the slots are filled, you would say.
Yeah.
I know that the majority of the slots, which are easy around work hours, are filled very quickly. It's like buying concert tickets when they come out.
It's gotta be like, go on.
Well, I guess, I guess that was my question, like, are those ones like first thing in the morning and last thing in the afternoon typically the ones that fill up, and then the middle of the day is just a ghost town?
No, there are people here all the way through.
Yeah, I think our teachers have been so super flexible about, I, none of those times on that day that are left work for me, can I meet you at 8:15 or whatever? Of course, no problem.
But if you're in here on the afternoon with conferences, there is a constant stream of parents and teachers coming, parents and kids coming in for their conferences. People don't, it's not a ghost town.
Maybe they could also vote for the school budget, or, or, I don't know.
It's not the school budget, like, that's not, we've already agreed to that.
That one isn't, I, yep. For me, the bigger issue is that we don't have a date. So like-
As for us, that is the bigger issue.
So like, I feel like it would be easier if we were like, this is the date we want to do it, and then we can make a plan, even if we come up with a plan that feels good or is a compromise, it's still not a sure thing.
And I would have to change the schedule and then change it again, like, I don't know, I've already put in my days off for them, so.
Yeah. I mean, that, I mean, that, yeah, that's a, right, I mean, like, adding time off, to me, is really super unfriendly to our, the community that we're serving, right? That requires parents to have additional days off or additional daycare, or, right? I mean, we've published our calendar. I am for sorting it out going forward. I'm not, I'm not for sorting it out on the calendar we've published. I don't know how you guys, everybody else feels.
I, I agree with Lenny, we can't sort it out anyways unless we have a date.
Right.
It certainly doesn't make sense to publish a calendar and be like, well, now we're taking this day off, oh, just kidding, it's this day, right? Like, we have to have that date if we're gonna even consider it.
Can you call someone? Tell them.
For us?
I know, I know. I mean, how are other towns doing this? Do they just not have to share the space, or?
Where does Exeter vote?
S S T.
S S T. They come into the foyer.
And so they just, do they not have preschool that day? How do they do it?
It's totally separate, you can't get to preschool from where that gym is.
Oh, they go right into Talbot, right? And I mean, in East Kingston, it's the same thing, they have those big doors right into the gym, right off of the parking lot, too. It's a little bit, a little bit different.
That's how it is in Kensington, you go in those doors and it's locked down, but that didn't-
Well, maybe the selectmen could pay for a renovation of our gym. All right, so anybody, I mean, I don't think we can make a decision right now, anyways. I mean, we can't-
Yeah, I think that, like, Ron's solution makes sense to me. And I, I hear everything you're saying about the, the kids, but I also think there's a relationship between us and the Select Board that is like-
But we can't vote on something we don't know.
That's what I'm saying, but until the date is set, I don't think it makes sense to like take a vote.
And I, and I really appreciate the difficulty getting in and out of the rec. I think that's a bigger issue than this meeting, right? Like, the town needs to figure out how people, people can get in and out of the rec safely.
Yeah, right. So we don't meet again until September?
Right, I guess what I would say is, I totally sympathize with the February issue of not knowing the date. I think it's the statutory responsibility of the Select Board and the town clerk to make sure the election happens. So no matter what happens, no matter what you guys decide, if the date changes and you can't accommodate us, we will find a way to have the election, because we have to, right? So I mean, it's a really tough situation, given that that date is relatively uncertain. It sounds like we think we know what will be on the second Tuesday, but I mean, I wish even more than you that I knew when it was, because I have to take off work, too. So I guess if, if this board is not comfortable doing anything with that presidential primary in February 2024, I would be interested in the discussion about the September 10th date for the following, in the fall of 2024, and then the future one, so that we could, you know, if we have to figure out sort of a stopgap measure for February 2024, we will then potentially know that all future elections will be able to be here. You know, we're trying to make this work for everyone in the community. And I appreciate that we don't want, we don't want kids going to school in June because of this, but what I had been hearing is that you guys were already working on moving things around and changing your PD days and, and trying to make some space. I think that's what other schools do. My impression is that I don't think other schools go to school longer who hold elections. I don't believe.
We did do that, but we aligned, and this is what we, we just need data, right? To me, I need data about what those other schools are doing. Because what we were asked was to approve a calendar where our PD days were in alignment with all of the other schools' PD days, so that there could be collaboration across schools.
Right.
And so our PD days for next calendar year are set-
Right.
-according to what the district told us all the other schools were doing.
But this isn't a PD day? These aren't PD days, and maybe that's why.
I'm assuming schools must do conference days, or else they just must be closed those days, right? I mean, I don't know. I don't know, I can't speak for other schools, what they do.
Yeah, if they're not using their building, then it's not a PD day.
Right.
So a lot of them are not.
So, I mean, yeah.
You can revisit it in September, once you know the date.
Revisit in September.
Yeah, you can change the schedule in September. Right now, you've published it. I would say, once you get a date, then you can, then Ron could put out when the change would be, if that's what's gonna happen, which would make sense and help out. The problem with other calendar years is that each board has to set the calendar, so it wouldn't be this board today-
Sure.
-for 24, 25, it would be a note to every year come back and ask for that. So we're looking at that September-
And I still, and, and I still want to know what other boards are doing, because like, that's the third week in a row that would be a short week for, at the beginning of the school year, right? Like, week one, you don't go to school Friday, week two, you don't go to school Monday because it's Labor Day, now the week three, you don't go to school another day. And so I just want to understand how everybody else is doing that, right? Like, there's, like, the community joke that it's no school November, and like, now we're talking about no school February and maybe no school September. And I'm making joke light of it, but like, it is something that we have to like look at. And I don't, I'm totally with you, we want to support it, I just want to know how everybody else is doing it.
I mean, maybe if the board is amenable to, you know, continuing this discussion, then maybe we come back after we get some data from other schools and after we can hopefully nail down the Secretary of State on that date. You know, I think our goal is just to have safe, effective, error-free elections, and we really cannot do that in the rec. And in this town, we don't have anything else. I don't know if any of you guys went to the rec charrette that happened, but there was tons of discussion about this. And in their final mock-up that they made for the town, one of the things was to build an event space, an indoor gym, where you can have pickleball and basketball and elections. So like, the long-term plan for the town, 10-year plan, 15-year plan, this will probably be a moot point, but that costs money and taxes, and there'll be lots of discussions between now and then.
Build that gym right over here in this mud field?
I mean, that might even, who knows, 10 years from now, we might have a standalone gym here. Like, this is not necessarily a forever fix here, but we're just looking for-
I will speak for all of us, we're totally cool with continuing the conversation.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I think that would work.
I think that we want to make it work, we just, I think, need more information, we need a date, and we need to, I mean, just figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great, because you know this, we had, what, 1,700 people go to the last presidential primary, and there may be more this time. So we certainly would be very much in favor of having it here if we could. So yeah, if you're willing to keep that discussion open, then we can certainly circle back when we have some sort of a sense from the Secretary of State on the dates. Okay?
So we'll put it on September.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Community engagement events is up next. The only thing that I had there was summer newsletters. Does a newsletter come out in the summer?
But only one, they skip a month.
July and August are usually combined?
Thank you.
Combined, so there's one newsletter in the summer. So I'm, I'm more than happy to write a summer newsletter, I haven't written one in a long time. But anybody have any topics I'd like to see covered?
I think that deadline, Allison, is still June 15th. If that makes any difference.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
For the whole, for the summer?
Let me find out.
Beginning of July, if there's not one.
I mean, could you just do the Eddies?
No, Brian already stole that.
That was in this, one that's coming. Just do it again.
Do it again.
Mr. Q's ukulele performance at the ceremony of the Eddies.
That's gonna get a-
Play the video.
Play the video, yeah.
Stills, stills of the video.
Let me look and see when it says it.
They're a year in review from-
Do a year in a review? We could talk about, we didn't, did, you didn't talk about the robotics club?
I did not, I think that was still unknown at the time of our last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was, too.
But the, you know, things are fully back, there was cross-country again, there was, you know, new things like the robotics club.
Could you almost do like a welcome to new families, kindergarten families, like, you know?
That sounds like that should be from you.
You should write about the short slide.
The short slide.
You should write the short slide. People have been wondering about the short slide.
Robotics, cross-country, new playground equipment.
Deadline is June 15th, sorry.
Ron, maybe a welcome-
Yep, plot two.
-to new families, all right. All right, so just one. All right, Budget Committee.
I don't think we've met since last time.
Okay. And so the Capital Improvement Plan?
Yep. So just thanks to Megan and Allison for looking over. We put 12 different projects as priorities and submitted on Friday to the town for the Capital Improvement Plan. Those go starting this summer, all the way up to the summer of 2028. So tried to prioritize what has been going on in major capital expenses that we would now earmark for impact fees that we have, and it would not be a surprise, as well as things that we're putting, or have put, or will continue to put into our, our budget. So here's the 12 big things that we had identified through our long-term or our three-year facilities plan, but also things that have come up. So that was what was submitted. I have the other documents to show you, but it's, it's more on the spreadsheet that we had to prioritize, so I have the official copies. But everything has been submitted as of Friday, the deadline was today, so the town has what we will be looking at and how we'll be doing.
I heard you were the first ones to submit. I completed packet, so well done.
Thank you.
And the ERV controls, we are, are, those were already in this year's-
Yeah, we're working on it, it's just not complete yet, so I didn't put it as a finished project.
Yeah.
We're still working on it.
Any questions, any concerns, any, it's too late anyways, but I'm just kidding. Thank you, Chris, for doing all that.
And you, whoever else, you were in that meeting? You two were there? No?
Well, we, we chatted.
You were present.
Megan and Allison. We, we chatted about it.
It was valuable, so thank you.
Communications. And the Wellness Committee, nothing really new. We're in the, we are going to try to finish up a draft policy to, I don't know, get to you guys. I think the draft policy will probably go to Esther first, because we're, we were given approval to like, throw everything we want in it and have it be a dream policy, and then she'll tell us what is realistic and what is not realistic. So anyways, that's where that is. So you want us to keep going and put policy at the end end?
It's up to you guys. I'm fine with that.
Well, let's get Molly out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So somewhere are the manifests. Okay, perfect, if you want to pass those back this way. So in your board pack is a current year financial. You're going to see that the repeater expense that we talked about is still going to remain as expense, and you're going to see the revenue at the bottom. And so what happens when you have a public hearing to accept and expend, it essentially increases your appropriation that was voted. So we'll stay that way. But, so the, some of the major changes. We have a lot of encumbrances based on the number of days left, just because we take a real hard scrub now that we're getting super close to the end of the year. We had some changes in student need for ABA expense. For the special ed, the accounting adjustment, what we had there is, we had an entry that was adding both revenue and expense equal amount, so there's no net impact on the actual fund balance, because I removed the expense and the revenue. So if you looked back at last month's board pack, that revenue from KES was the same amount higher as the expense I relieved. So it's, it's, we was removing the same amount of expense and revenue at the same time. For co-curricular, we had some expenses related to Alnoba and robotics. Some staff members were finishing up some courses, which is fantastic. And then we did unencumber the $10,000. So we had, the town had reached out saying they wanted to pay the vendor directly, and we had like $10,300 left in the purchase order. So it was like, perfect. So they'll be making the last payment, and then I think we have like $300 left to pay for that. And then we had some repair and maintenance and encumbrances on utilities. Did anyone have any questions on these?
I have so many questions. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
So this special ed ABA, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly that that is a change for one month of expense.
So that, so when we do an encumbrance change, it's always projecting for the, to the remainder of the year?
So that is one month of expense.
So Ron, I don't know if you want to.
I just want to make sure that that's the right number, because if that is the correct number, we are going to need to re-look at our budget for next year.
Yes, so we brought it up with Dr. Bennett, because we're seeing ABA expenses across all of our schools in the district go up significantly. That's the cost of what they're, they're charging. So I don't know if that's the overall cost from one month, but that was the cost from the last time your budget had gone through, based on the services kids needed. So that's matching.
And we expect that to continue into next year?
That is a question I have in researching, because I had a grave concern about that number, and because contracted services in special education has gone up significantly over the course of last year. We're looking at almost 14% increases in a lot of cases.
We are training one of our paraprofessionals to do part of this ABA work next year, which is a good investment. And get funding through our operating budget, but also through IDEA. So I, I don't have all those figures about what we have coming out of IDEA to pay for some of these items. So it's, for a couple of them, I know, and I don't know if this is included, this is just ABA expenses that we're talking about on the spreadsheet.
So there's a purchase order opened up since the last board pack that increased the encumbrance. And whenever we encumber things, we always try to encumber to the end of the year the best that we can.
Oh, I, I know. That's, that's why I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure we didn't accidentally move a decimal point or anything. This is the number.
So we can check with Dr. Bennett, because she'll have the direct cost for the ABA services. We can ask her that tomorrow.
Okay.
And get you an answer. We can share it with the board.
Two other quick things. There is no revenue on here for food service, and there's also no revenue to offset the food service adjustment. Is that?
So food service is a different animal, so.
So in past years, we have had a revenue for food service and a revenue to offset the section of food service, where like, we have to do that thing with moving money.
So we did present it slightly different in past years. So at the end of the year, your general fund, that's the balance that's given back in the tax rate. So if your food service fund ends in a positive fund balance, that sits there for the next year. If your food service ends in a negative position, then the general fund has to cover the loss.
Sorry, I feel like I'm not explaining myself well. Don't we have revenue from selling lunches?
Correct.
Shouldn't that be listed under revenues?
So it's not part of the revenue, oh, it's not part of the fund balance that would go back in the tax rate?
And so that's why it's not on here, because this revenue will go back to taxes?
So this here is calculating what will be given back in the tax rate. And so because you guys have a food service loss, at the end of the year, the adjustment.
Because we've had more reimbursement last year, that's why.
Correct.
I looked, I was looking at last year, and I was trying to figure out why it was different.
And so because you have a loss, that's telling you your food service fund is going to end at zero. Because your food service fund legally cannot be in a negative position at the end of the year?
No, I, I know that part. And so the, I, I literally looked at all of these for the last year to try to figure out how we got here. And the one I looked at for last year around this time had a line for food service revenue, which was because of the overage in, and then it was also food service adjustment.
Yep, so what happens is, at the end of the year, what we do is we have to book expense to the general fund and the same exact dollar value of revenue to the food service fund.
I know.
So it's a net zero total?
Yes, I get that. What I'm saying is, we have put it in the expense in our packet. We have not put it in the revenue. So.
It shouldn't be in the.
Because we don't have enough revenue to break past the expense.
I guess I just don't.
So, so your food service fund is ending in a negative position? So what happens is, and you can't move expense out of the food service fund?
Right, I know. I, how is this different from last year, I guess is what I'm trying to figure out? Because we always have to do this for the food service budget.
Well, we didn't have student-paid revenue for two years.
So we all ended in a positive fund balance last year?
In the food, you mean?
In the food service fund. So, so if you think about it.
We don't break even.
Right, but also, there was no, there was no collection of money, because.
But so was it?
But the federal, the federal government paid the parent portion.
Five different people asking five different questions about the same thing. But is the difference from last year that federal payments that paid for school lunches were reflected on this, but parents' contributions that pay for lunches are not reflected on this?
No, it just presented a slightly different way. We, we tried to make it less confusing.
But it just doesn't show up at all.
So, so we were presenting it this way, we thought, to make it less confusing. And so what's going to happen is, so you have your general fund, you have your food service fund. Your food service fund is projected to end in a negative position. And so legally, it can't be in the negative, right?
So we have that whole other section. Where we adjust for that.
Yep, so that's what I'm saying. So you have your general fund and your food service fund. Right now, let's just say this is negative $5,000. What we have to do is add $5,000 of expense to the general fund and add $5,000 of revenue to the food service fund.
I understand all of that. I'm saying I don't see the revenue to offset the loss.
I mean, you removed it from here, but we don't have it somewhere else either.
So this is just revenue higher than plan? So what this is saying, like, if we were, if we had gotten a boatload of food service revenue that we didn't know about, then we would report it or show it in some fashion on here. So right here, this is only revenue higher than plan. This is not all your revenue. Or I should say, different than plan, higher or lower.
Okay.
So the.
I, I give up.
It's just not like this.
I'm serious, I give up.
So, no, so.
They just took it off and moved it somewhere else.
Okay.
What, let's, let's back up. What is it that you want?
I think that there should be a revenue that is not listed to offset a fake expense in the expenses. Because the expense that is food service loss isn't really an expense. It's just moving something from a line where it can't be to a line where it can be.
So I couldn't, I can adjust this, and what I would do is here, this column is going to be general fund. The next column I can add and send it to you tomorrow would be food service fund, so that you'll see it.
No.
It's not a fake expense, that was a real expense.
But there's a negative expense in the top section that is canceled out by a positive expense in the bottom section, because we're not actually having a brand-new expense. I guess that's the point I'm trying to get at. We have, in our packet sometimes, an update to the food service loss line.
So do you just want like a?
Which is not a new expense.
Do you just want something on here that says? Food service, like, to show the food service revenue month?
Could we have like, this type of sheet for the food service fund?
No. Again, I already said I gave up. It's fine.
I mean, I can happily add more detail to it.
Nope.
Because the.
Nope. It's fine. I, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we expend $30,000 out of the special education trust fund.
What are you talking about?
What do you mean, what am I talking about?
Are we there? Do we need that money? I mean, we have a, we have a balance here.
And we also have things like this that can come up apparently really fast.
Yeah, but this is the.
Yeah, but we can expend it when we need it.
We won't have another meeting before September.
Do you need more money from us?
I don't believe so.
No.
No, I don't think so either.
So, so this here, we're taking the $55,000?
I, I quite literally understand how all of the numbers work. I did not know that it was possible in six weeks to need to spend this amount of money on new student needs.
So we're going to check and see what timeframe that $20,000 of expenses has come from.
Okay. Okay.
So that, I'm going to, I've already emailed Dr. Bennett.
So what happens if that is real?
Still are projecting $48,000.
No, 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 no. Because we can't spend $48,000. We can only spend up to what has been appropriated.
Correct, so if you look in the very, very bottom line of your expense, so on page seven of seven.
Yep.
So right now, the repeater expense is in here. You're $22,000 over.
That's including food services. I thought we don't get to include food services.
Your entire appropriation includes food service.
So that's going to come down by $10,000 by relieving the expense?
No, 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 no. So this $22,000, this is the comparison to the appropriation with the, the expense of the repeater already in here.
So it's everything.
By holding the public hearing, you've essentially increased your appropriation by the $55,202. Because you voted to accept and expend, which increases the appropriation.
I understand. The amount of money that that leaves still makes me uncomfortable personally. I understand if everyone else feels comfortable with it. I don't feel comfortable with it.
But if you take money out of the trust fund, you're just returning it to the town. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't.
Unless there, unless every six weeks we have to spend, spend $20,000. That's your worry.
I'm worried about what comes next, that we don't know about, because we're not having another meeting.
But again, this is like.
But we have only, what's today? The fifth? We have 25 days left.
I hear, I hear you. I hear you.
If that happened, could we do an emergency meeting?
We've done lots of emergency meetings in June. Lots, almost, like, for years, we had emergency meetings in June.
So I'd rather do an emergency meeting than, than put money in that will then have to be asked for to refill the.
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, when we had voted to, from the trust funds, remember, the vote's always from fund balance?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I know, I know.
Okay, let's, let Molly speak too. Okay, please.
I think that's all I had to say.
Okay.
Unless anyone has questions?
I had a question about when the year for Health Trust runs.
So, I mean, do you mean when the rate increases?
So we had an issue last year with the Health Trust payment getting applied to the wrong year or something. And so I was curious if the Health Trust fiscal year runs concurrent with the school fiscal year, or if it's offset?
So we're billed monthly by Health Trust? And so everything we report is on our fiscal year?
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
It says Alnoba and robotics to be reimbursed by the grant. Is there like, a grant just for STEM?
Yeah, at least it was a big grant.
There was a $15,000 robotics grant, and we used title for funds for Alnoba.
So that what happened is people are paid out of the operating budget, and then the grant pays the operating.
Reimburses the school.
I think this is not for now, but I think that this food service conversation has been happening for the seven years that I've been on the board. And it is just not very black and white for a lot of us. And I know the conversation and, and our public comment from, by the way, public comment is actually over. Is officially over, but our public comment from this last month is that I think that next year, it would be really great for us to work on a report, and I'd be happy to meet with you this summer to talk about it. But like, something that we see on a regular basis that, like, so that it seems a little bit more transparent what's happening in food services, because we did, you know, go out on, you know, and make the investment in bringing it in-house. And, you know, I don't think we're ending with as big a negative as I remember a bunch of years ago us ending with. Those negatives were bigger than they are right now. But I'm not, I think that it would be worth sort of a deeper dive into sort of what that looks like and so, so that we just understand, you know, how, how it's, how it's running on a regular basis.
So I do have a report. I'm just pulling it up right now. I think we might have included this in past board packs.
We did, I think, the month we talked about it a few months ago, right?
So I didn't include it every month, but I'm happy to. So this is how our accountant does it.
But this report, if I remember correctly, was pulled from like, two different sources, and it didn't match perfectly? Or maybe Maureen's numbers didn't match yours numbers? There was something that was not in alignment.
Correct, Maureen's numbers didn't match our numbers. So, so our accountant, I don't know if you can see this, every month, she goes through and takes the enrollment, the number of school days, the number of meals served, and it calculates what we should be getting from the state and federal, as well as what parents have paid. And so the top part is the revenue. Just trying to scroll down here. And then the bottom part is our expenses to date. So this is actuals to date, and what our accountant believes is the remaining. So then you take your total revenue, which for Brentwood is $85,000, minus your total expense, which for Brentwood is $111,000. Now, both numbers are for the entire year. Then, if you ended the positive year in a positive fund balance, which you did, of $16,007, you have to take the incoming revenue, minus your expense, minus your prior year positive balance, and that's where you get to the, the fund balance that's in here.
So could we just see that in the packet? I feel like that'd be a helpful way to.
Yeah, we, so Erica came out with, so with the total revenue of $85,000, the total expense of $111,000, utilizing your prior year positive fund balance of $16,000, that's where Erica came out with $9,595. And then you go to your report here, and you see the encumbrance is $9,595. So every month, she does this, and I think we did include this like, two months ago, So every month she does this, and I think we did include this like two months ago, maybe three months ago.
Last month.
We haven't typically included every month, but I'm happy to do it. So we already have the information. And what we do is we update this encumbrance until we get to the end of the year. And this is the entry that we were talking about before where we book this as expense and the food service gets the same amount of revenue to net zero in the food service fund.
That would be helpful. That expense, that total expense is like salaries, food, everything?
Yep. So it includes salary, um, the support staff that works in the kitchen, FICA, retirement, medical, dental, food supplies, propane, travel and services.
Like even just seeing that, I'm like, in one spot.
Yep. So we already have this report, which I'm happy to include every month when we send the board back.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then by next June, we'll get it. Like slowly.
When is New Hampshire gonna get on board with free lunch for all?
And I also just want to remind you, a few months ago I had put together the explanation for the food service fund and sent it to all the boards. So, um, if you go back, I did screenshots and highlights and if you have questions, just please let me know. I had three people independently read it, so someone that didn't know what gave me feedback to see if there's anything they were confused with. Please, if you have questions, let me know.
Other questions about the financials?
Great. And then, did I get the manifest back?
Thank you, Molly.
No problem.
Do you want to just keep going with the central office report?
Sure, yeah. Um, we, before this meeting, we met at five o'clock, uh, Energy Commission, um, basically Richard Labrecq and thank you for all the work he's been doing on it. He, um, did a comparison, kind of gave us a cost analysis of, uh, a model, what it would look like. We asked him questions and still that's, that's like the lunch program. It was a lot of, uh, accounting that I, we don't understand, so we're still trying to dig into that. But I think we're getting to a good spot of how we would want to market and present this to stakeholders. So September, we'll come back, start meeting again, start thinking about the stakeholders and we can start presenting this information to talk about what type of option, or is this an option that the town would be willing to, to entertain on the March vote? So making a lot of progress, um, feeling comfortable where we're getting. Uh, we also did get another, he reached out to another company for a quote. It was a little bit, uh, lower, about eighty thousand dollars lower. So I think we have some flexibility. Oh, Letty or Kate or Ron, if you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just appreciate, um, someone so knowledgeable about the process, kind of talking through us, so. He's been pretty patient with, like, my questions, because I'm trying to get a grip on, you know, there's a lot of good reasons to do it, but what is the final dollar amount that we could, what's the best number we can provide to the common Brentwood citizen who wants to know why we want to do this? If that makes sense.
I would imagine that the electric bill here is going up the same way it is at my house. Just an appalling.
Locked into October, right?
So we had been locked into.
All right, um, you need permission?
Yeah, each time around this year, we always ask to give permission to, which would be Dr. Asbell over the summer hours since we don't meet any certified staff. If we did unfortunately lose someone that would move or had another opportunity that we would have the ability to hire, uh, without having the board, um, meeting, we'd vet it the same way that we always do with the references. Um, right now, we meet with every candidate, um, that comes through. Uh, we don't anticipate anybody leaving since they were all there on Saturday night. It was a fantastic turnout, so. Again, um, but that would be the ask in case something does, that we're not holding up or losing a candidate if, in time being.
Do, yeah. So you need a motion? Anybody who'd like to make a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the district.
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
To hire certified staff over the summer.
Would you still let us know?
Yes, uh, we'll let you know. Give you the whole process.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I see those teenagers playing on the mini library. That's fine.
They're probably gonna pick out.
Seems a lot smaller than it has this season.
Uh, also in there, I presented a, um, proposed meeting schedule for next year. Um, the only, you know, I kept it as the, um, first or second Monday based on holidays in this schedule, so it's very similar to this year. The only thing I left is a TBT, uh, TBD is, um, our school district meeting. We've had it on Fridays the last couple of years and see if you wanted to keep it on that Friday. I do have to ask, because I also have Stratum next year and you're the both town meetings, so I can't have it on the same night.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I actually had a note in here before I even realized that you had a PTD, that whether we wanted to try, I mean, nobody else does it on a Friday night. Our turnout is okay, not great. If there was, I mean, it's a pretty quiet week, whether we could do it on a different night. What night does Stratum like to do it on?
They do it the following Monday. So they used to do it at the same time on Fridays and then when we had that vacation week, that's where we got a little
Right.
sideways, so.
I would love to do it on a Friday night personally, but. Anybody else have any opinions?
Oh, I don't, I mean.
If it was like.
We would normally meet on Monday.
Earlier in the, earlier in the year, like, or the winter, like, there's lots of sports, but like that post-vacation is like a really, you have like a week or two of, of quietness in life, I think. So I feel like there would be pretty flexible.
I think Monday makes sense.
Right, we normally meet the first Monday.
Well, Stratum has been doing it on Mondays, so I think.
But are they are doing it not the Monday after vacation, but two Mondays?
Uh, that, so it would be what, the twelfth, thirteenth?
Yeah.
Thirteenth?
No, you're looking at the wrong year.
No, they're talking about the other. Like, you're asking us to do it the Monday night that vacation ends.
March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four is a Wednesday.
That doesn't make sense.
It does, I mean, it doesn't make sense because it says March tenth.
So they're saying they would be on the eleventh? Or the fourth?
I, I don't think the fourth is a great idea personally, because I just feel like people who have come back from vacation.
They're like.
I think the tenth, I think March tenth is not Friday.
No, it's not. March eighth would be Friday. I apologize.
That's okay.
So Stratum is doing it on the eleventh?
Correct.
What about Wednesday?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I agree with you. Letty, Monday would be great, but I don't think the fourth is a good idea. If the Monday, the eleventh is already taken, I would be fine with any of those other days, really.
I feel like a Wednesday is like a good midday.
Midweek.
Six in case of snow.
Yeah, that's right, because we do need to be able to make it up if we need it.
Yeah, and the moderator pre-picks the snow day.
Okay.
It's a deliberative session for the co-op.
Is the sixth?
Seventh.
Have they said that yet?
Uh, I, I have not, I'm not part of, I don't know if they have, but I think maybe Liz was at a meeting.
Were you at a meeting or are you discussing?
No, they're usually, it's usually Thursday.
They're usually a Thursday?
Yeah, but, but, you know, they've changed it all around now. They have something on a Sunday. I, I don't know. Maybe it's on a Sunday.
Yeah, they have, they have been a Sunday afternoon. Yeah.
They've been, they've been doing it Saturday or Sunday. East Kingston's doing one day and the co-op's been doing the other day. I don't know which comes, we're just.
I feel like it was a weekend.
I think the co-op is.
It was a weekend.
I brought all my kids, so that must have been a weekend.
They changed it to Sundays or Sundays.
Okay.
So if we did Wednesday, the thirteen?
No, it has to be before. It has to be before the Tuesday elections.
No, it doesn't.
I think it does, right? It does.
Nope. Unless there's a.
The RSA, it's always been.
Unless there's a different law for the town, because the town has theirs after.
Well, we.
No, it ha, it's a week law. It ha, it, it's, we've had this conversation before. But it's like when the election opens, there's like a window of time. Because when we tried to make it.
I can, we can even hold this date and I can renew the DR, the DRA does not have the language that Letty's asking about right now. And I can make sure that it falls in it. I know the Friday or Monday that we've selected does fall within that timeframe that's, that's put out there. Uh, but they have not updated yet. So we can just have it as a TBT.
Okay, so let's put.
I'm fine with the Wednesday.
Let's put March sixth as a possibility and then.
Just want to just check, make sure there's no other deliberatives that week. I don't believe there is.
Well, if we're the first ones to pick, then we get that first.
Right. They'll have to tell Stratum. Can't do that.
When's their meeting? After ours? Too bad. No, like literally when, when do they?
We'll hold it as a six and then we'll just update. And if there's, we need to make the change, we will.
All right.
Thank you.
Is this budget committee, just, budget committee meeting just a placeholder?
Yeah, because you usually provide that date when they're meeting.
I can tell them that that's when we want to do it.
I just pulled it off of what we bet last year.
Sure, whatever that, yeah.
Okay, um. Let's go, let's, you're done then, Chris?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Let's go back and get these policies on here.
So, um, Heather sent the summaries and the summaries are in the board packet beneath.
I'm so sorry.
Think. The first one that's on the list is a pediculosis policy. And that was before Heather's summaries, and that's something we retained from last week because uh, the medical professionals thought the criteria for return to school were inconsistent with the rest of the policy. So.
You're gonna hate me. They still are.
They still are.
They are?
Well, I mean.
No, no, they, it hasn't been changed.
Oh, I think we.
It's the same policy.
I think we strike the last paragraph.
That's where I was going. I think great minds think alike, because everything else looked normal to me.
Yep.
And didn't have anything that looked like would be objectional to you. And it was just that pa, last paragraph. So my, I think it was in the minutes that I was gonna come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
And so like.
So like, just get rid of that paragraph that says criteria for return to school?
Yep.
Yep. Are you okay with that?
I don't, right.
Yep. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
There was comments from, uh.
On the LICE one?
Yeah, um. It's a, uh, I'm actually just reading this for the first time because I just got a review.
That's fine.
Um, just clarification with the LICE policy. If a student is allowed to return to class, uh, then why do they need a return to school plan?
We agree.
So they just took that out.
That's what we took out. All right. And then, and then from Rebecca Doucette's comments were, uh, instead of saying the nurse will periodically provide info about LICE, I would say the nurse will provide info upon request. And may have been in the last paragraph too.
No, the last paragraph says the nurse will recheck.
Oh, it's in the second paragraph. The school nurse will.
Periodically provide information.
So just cross out periodically and just say provide information to families of all children.
Upon request.
Upon request.
Upon request. Is there anything in the handbook about it?
Um, I'd have to check. Not sure.
That would be another good way to get it in front of everybody if they wanted it.
Every time I talk about LICE, it makes.
I, I.
You know what's so funny? When I was reading this today, I literally kept itching my head. I was like, there's just something.
Universal human response.
Yep.
All right. Is that, Dan, is that your only comment for this one?
Yep.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So, new policies, um, the first one that's listed on the revision brief and the one that's listed in the, it's not the first, it is the first one on the packet, is EBD. And a while, over the past several months, we approved probably close to a dozen various safety and training policies. And the discussion at the time when they were first presented was if there was gonna be an overwhelming overarching umbrella policy to cover those. EBD is that overarching umbrella policy.
Just like reading it with the context of the Safety and Security Committee, like, we definitely are doing all of those things and more. So I feel like it's not something that's like, it's a good check for the future. So like, make sure that we continue.
Yep.
To do those things.
What other policies did you guys have commented on?
Uh, on this one, there was a question of, um, who would be serving on that safety, school safety program and how are they being asked?
Right now, it's a board member. There's, are there staff? And Ron chose. So it wouldn't be like a teacher. Like, it would not have a teacher in it, so it's, it would just be Ron and a board member.
Should there be a teacher representative?
I don't.
You mean at the, at the, at the.
At the safety and security meeting?
Is that what you're going for? Is that what you're looking for?
It's not our, it's not our district's kind of, it's not our district's meeting. We're, we're a participant, so we don't determine.
Does that answer your question? Or was that not even the question you were asking?
Uh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I think just for Dan's note, it's an SAU School Safety Task Force, which is comprised of administrators from each one of our elementary and, each one of our buildings, as well as district office members, uh, first responders from all of our communities, fire and police, um, transportation. So, uh, everyone from transportation, all that. School councils are part of that, um, and, uh, a school board member from each one, as well as our director of safety, who, he reviews every single safety plan that we have to submit to the state.
Can't wait to type all that.
This is recorded, so you can just, just post the YouTube one.
Oh, uh.
Do you want to, I didn't have any comments or concerns about that one. I actually didn't have any. My, the LICE home was the only one that had other comments, so. I don't have any comments about any of them. You want to go through them all and then do one?
One of those go back to Dan and see if they're covered.
Yeah.
And the other policies, we'll take them, the ones that get policies on, or questions on?
J I C I.
I had a question on that one too. But you can go first.
Dangerous weapons, yeah.
But you can go first.
Uh, the question is, how is policy code J I C I different than KFA? It seems contradictory on that.
Sure do.
And then the, the question is, is it stating, can you bring a weapon? You just can use it to intimidate someone?
It was.
That is current state law.
So that, yeah, the.
Non students.
That students can't.
Students cannot. And that's why the J I C I has any student who brings or possesses a firearm. I think the language, not to the extent I would like, but is vaguely discouraging adults from bringing weapons on school property. Um, or it just says flatly, oh, weapons are not permitted in school buildings. Members of the public who violate this policy may be reported to law enforcement authorities if used in a threatening, harassing or intimidating manner. I think the law prevents us from being
Yeah, I don't.
more prescriptive. But that is, I think, the best we're able to do under current law.
I don't, I don't think we can have paragraph three under other weapons, under current law.
For which one? J?
J I C I.
C I.
The weapons are not permitted.
Yeah, I don't think we can say that.
I think we can.
We can as long as we don't say.
You can carry a gun, but you can't, uh.
It says weapons are not permitted.
Under this policy. And then if you violate it, it's a slap on the wrist or, but you're not reported, um, to law enforcement, unless you're using it in a threatening, harassing or intimidating manner.
But I don't think we can not permit them. I understand that the consequence is just a slap on the wrist.
But can we, um, because of state law?
Because of state.
So don't, don't we have lawyers looking over these policies? Like you?
Yeah, well, I'm not my, not my area of expertise.
But do we have people whose areas, I mean, there must be.
Well, the New Hampshire School Board.
The School Board.
It's a model policy from New Hampshire School Boards, which is written by their lawyer on staff.
So I'd say we, we pass it and if, unless someone has an objection to it here, and then if someone says you can't do that, then we can change it.
The question that I had on this policy is where it says that students that bring a firearm to school will be suspended for twelve months.
That's state law.
That's law.
That's.
Like, there's like, I don't know. I feel like that would be more, create a more threatening situation. Just automatically, if that's the law, then.
Yeah, they're, one of the, um, one of the.
And, and the expulsion may be modified by the superintendent.
Right.
Mm-hmm. This one, I looked it up.
So, you know, if it's like, I wrote this because it's my grandfather's World War II gun and I wanted to show it to my class, because we're going over World War II, right?
Well, even if a student's in crisis, like a twelve-month suspension might not be the appropriate response.
So Dan, you're, can, the concern from you guys is that they seem contradictory?
Yeah.
Yep.
In what way? In that the.
So KFA, paragraph eight, the note, is in direct contradiction to J I C I, weapons are not permitted on school, in school buildings.
So I think, I don't see a contradiction between the note on eight and J I C I.
How so?
Because, um, the mere possession or displaying shall not in and of itself and without additional circumstances constitute reckless conduct or a violation of this policy. So, um, the, and that's KFA, J S, J I C I requires reporting to, uh, law enforcement if the weapon is used in a um, threatening, harassing or intimidating manner.
Right. I feel like the difference that I'm honing in on is that it's permitted versus not permitted. J I C I specifically says it's not allowed, aside from consequences. KFA specifically says it is allowed.
Well, is it, but is it?
By non students.
J I C I talking about students?
No.
J I C I is, is dangerous weapons on school property. And it says, you know, dangerous weapons are not permitted on school property.
I guess.
KFA is conduct on district. K F A is conduct on district property, which is generally about.
So, so if you.
And this is mere possession of a gun, doesn't constitute, um.
I, I think.
Bad conduct on school property, under this policy.
I think that there's, the thing is, is they're separating in J I C I firearms, separate from other weapons. So you may not have, uh, slingshot, metal knuckles, billys, knives, electric defense weapons, aerosol defense, but you martial arts weapons, right? Those are not allowed, but guns are.
So messed up.
Right?
I see, so they, they defined weapon to not include.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, weapon doesn't include guns or firearms, that's, that's, that's separate in this policy.
The other question that I have, and I don't know why I bother asking, because obviously these have all been vetted by everyone, but, uh, that first section in J I C I talks about the provisions of the Federal Gun Free Schools Act. Under current state law, we don't have to follow that, so I was just curious if having that reference in there is still okay.
This, this popped up in another policy too, and it drives me insane, because my understanding, and again, not my area of law, but there's something called the supremacy clause, so if there's a conflict between the USS Con, US Constitution, not the USS Constitution.
The vote.
The US Constitution, or if there's a conflict between federal law and state law, federal law controls.
Controls, always. The more can.
So we don't have to do this policy at all, because it's modifying into state law that conflicts with.
Hold on. I wanna make sure that I heard that correctly, because New Hampshire state law specifically says that we are not required to follow federal gun laws.
So we're not allowed to?
Sure, and I, so I, so.
I mean, in those.
My understanding is that those laws are invalid on their face, but.
Sounds great.
I could be wrong about that, I probably have.
But it, I mean, like if they were, the answer would only be if they got challenged, right?
Yeah.
But, so, I mean, federal law supersedes state law. You can always go more conservative, but you can't go looser than what the federal law, in, in any circumstance.
We do already, like.
Can I, can I ask a question, because I feel like we're spiraling a little bit?
Sure.
Do we want to change these policies? Because, I mean, if we wanna change them, we, we should change them.
I would ra, I would rather approve K F A than J I C I. I, I am probably personally not going to approve J I C I, but I will approve K F A.
Becau, because you don't think that? Because why?
I don't feel like it's clear, I understand that other people do, and that's fine. We don't have to agree.
No, I don't, I wanna understand your point, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you or agreeing with you, I, I don't underst, I wanna know why, what you're, what you don't.
It feels like we are trying to like wiggle our way around weird restrictions, and I just don't see the point when this does all of the same things more clearly, in my mind.
But I agree with Brian, that it, it's a bit semantics, but, but K F A is conduct. Right, I mean, it's about conduct versus.
K F A is conduct and J, J I C I is possession.
So if someone came in and had a, had it, got threatened with a gun, would that be co, covered under K F A?
Yes.
Yes, because they would be, they would threaten.
And if someone came in with a billy club, but was not threatening, that's not covered under K F A?
Is there, they're not allowed to have it?
Why?
That would be J I C I.
They have to have J I C I to be not allowed.
I, anything could be a weapon if you try hard enough, uh, it's fine.
Okay.
Brian, how do you feel about these?
It's, I agree with the semantic piece, I am comfortable with where they are, to the extent that I'm comfortable with anything remotely condoning guns on school property, or in public generally. But I, we talked through these, I think it was just last week, um, or two weeks ago, um, I did look at the statutes prior to last week's, or two weeks ago's meeting. I, I'm comfortable with both policies.
Dan, do you have any other comments?
About that one?
Um, yeah, let's stick with this one for right now.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Other concerns, questions?
Uh, there was a question about the best interest and management's. So, what is the ordinary manifesto procedure that is referenced in two D?
J C A.
It only, it says and only tuition is mentioned, and there's no mention of services or personal requirements as a receiving school.
I also have a question about this section.
Which one are we looking at, I'm sorry?
J C A, two.
Two D.
D.
I'm looking at the wrong, two D.
Two D. Wait. Subheading A, like first heading, bold A, number two, letter D, because there is also a bold B that has a two.
Yeah.
So, so Dan, your question is, it's just really about the cost of taking in a student, and doesn't include services and other needs.
Right. So, and I don't have the policies in front of me, and I didn't get them, so I'm reading questions sort of blind here, so I apologize for that, um.
Do you wanna look?
Would you like a copy of the?
Sure.
I think what you, what you're asking is, what's the ordinary, uh, process for paying that?
Well, this is, this is separate from like an added displacement, right? This is, this is not meant to describe the added displacement.
Yeah, so when you're doing manifest hardship, you know, we, we've sent students from, say, Swayze to Newfields.
Right.
It's within our district, we're not, we're not changing money. However, if I was gonna send a student from Swayze to Epping, there's gonna be a cost for that student to go over to Epping. That procurement process will include everything that entitles that student, so if they're on an IEP and need special services, that'd be part of the agreed-upon tuition rate of which we'd send over there, so it would be a one-time.
So what Dan's asking for all gets lumped up, and when they consider what that tuition rate is.
Agreed upon, so that would come to the board to say, you're sending Chris Andruski to Epping, it's gonna cost you $15,000, and here's what it is, the board would have.
So, so what a hypothetical situation like that be, Chris Andruski is moving to Epping in November or October, but currently lives in Brentwood, can we, the parent might request?
No, that wouldn't be an educational hardship, that, because typically you would just, they would accept them early, because of transitions. An example may be that, um, I got extremely bullied, and I could no longer feel like I could come here safely, which is causing my anxiety to come to school, so therefore, I'd like a fresh start, I know some, I know my parents are gonna drive me back and forth to Epping, because it's close, and we, we'd look at that, so typically, it's, it's severe circumstances or cases where it's in the best interest to remove that, that child from that, um, educational setting to put them into a different one.
Because this also says, a placement made relative to a student's special ed needs and services shall not be deemed a change of school assignment for purposes of this section. So this isn't like.
So it's not about added districts?
Special ed education out of district.
So if the answer is that those things are considered when they set the tuition rate, does that answer the question?
I think, so, part of this question is asking, as a receiving school, how are we impacted? And from what Chris just said, we're not impacted.
We would receive it, you know, we'd look at, you know, class sizes, you know, what services, if we need additional services, it would be on that district to pay for it, so that we would hire it.
Just like if we were to say, those costs would be on us.
Sorry, that's covered under section four, right? Tuition for students reassigned to us by other districts? We have a policy about that, apparently.
It also said somewhere in here, I don't know where it is, but like, that student would be counted in the average daily attendance of the home district school. Is that?
Right.
I have to find it, but I read it, and I was like.
Yes, because you're paying the tuition for him to go there, so you would get the reimbursement money at the end of the year.
Okay.
Did you have other questions on that one, Dan?
Uh, no, I think I'm good with that one. And then the only other question they had was, how are policies being prioritized?
They're not, they're just throwing them 20 at a time at us.
Never lands on the table.
We did, we did discuss this early, uh, in the process in the fall, so when Heather Murray came on to do, first year, second year?
Second, second.
Second year, um, over last summer, there was a big push where they had, uh, an intern review all of the policies, chart, uh, which ones, um, schools didn't have, what policies were recommended, and then what's, well, back up. Here are all the policies, and there's another columns for all the schools. Which schools are missing policies, were those policies required by the New Hampshire School Boards Association, were they recommended by the New Hampshire School Boards Association? If they had a policy, when was it last updated, has the law underlying that policy changed? So then we sort of color-coded things as far as, let's do required policies first, and then within that category, things that affect, um, health and safety, things that affect academics, things that affect other activities, uh, and then required, then recommended, and then optional. So that's how things are prioritized.
But it's been a lot.
Yeah, and because that pol, that process was done last summer, it was an ambitious drive this school year to do, like 10 or 12 policies a month. Having caught up, uh, we should see a slower, uh, a lower volume of policies next year for review and approval.
And there's a system going forward, so we don't get this backlog, Heather's on it.
Yes, um, you know, if, if the law changes, or recommendations from the NH, the School Board Association change, then, you know, we may see things, maybe there's a law change that affects a large number of policies, but I'd hope that we would see a small, uh, smaller volume.
So would anybody like to make a motion to approve J L C C through K F A?
I have a really quick question about G A D A.
Okay.
So that's about like, um, recommendations for employees who have engaged in sexual misconduct while employed at the school, like, that's the gist. Do, is there any part of that policy that requires us to call and like, check the references of school for employees that we're hiring? Because this policy kind of covers like, people that are, work here. But for the incoming side, like, if somebody has worked at a school, we have to call that school as a reference check?
I would hope we would.
Check on any new employee?
Mm-hmm, okay.
But is there a policy around that?
Just saying like, if somebody has worked at a school, we have to call that school.
I don't think there's a.
I mean, I, it is an interesting, I mean, we have, we create all these policies, right? And like, that's something that I'm sure is done standard, I would hope, right? But it's an interesting question, if you have to call the previous school, or just the references that they give, right? Because.
If they give references that don't include a school they worked at, then this, for that school, wouldn't, wouldn't anything?
I mean, certainly, you can imagine a scenario where someone has like sexual misconduct at a school, right? And they're not like, convicted of something.
And find, like, they're not gonna.
Right, but that's what they're saying, if they don't actually list them.
They're like, oh, I had this issue at this school, but I didn't at this school I previously worked at, and here's my, you know.
So you don't put that school in your resume, or your experience, and fill that gap.
Or they're just not, or you put it on.
But you don't, but you don't include it as your references, right? Like, that's an interesting, alright.
Yeah, so Heather does all the reference checks through HR, and I know that she tries to get a current reference, school administrator, district level administrator, then she'll go back and she requires at least three reference checks, that are not contradictory in any manner.
But there's no policy.
There's not a, how many you have to or should call.
Alright, do we wanna approve these?
Yes.
Not really, but.
So I'll make the motion to approve policies, EBB through K F A.
Yes.
Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Alright, aye. Alright, Ron.
Ron, I have some data to see.
More numbers.
We haven't, we haven't completed all of our reading diagnostics for the end of the year, um, but I have, um, what we have. So, first thing going around is math. I don't know how about the part of reading coming that way. And, um, task force.
Trip's a whole packet there.
Crushed it.
From this year?
Yes.
These are one pages?
Yes, they're back in, uh, Brentwood.
I was reading, not in the correct orientation.
The one that's most complete is math, could we all look at math at the same time?
Yes.
The end-of-year diagnostic overall placement for all of our students taking, um, the I-Ready diagnostic is 78% students on or at grade level for mathematics for I-Ready. That number last year was 83%. The yellow this year, which is one grade level below, is at 19% this year, last year was at 17%. They're pretty, they're pretty close from, from year to year. So you'll see the categories of, of what we're trying to focus on, the number of students that are mid or above grade level, early on grade level, one grade level below, and then the breakdown of grade levels for the diagnostic.
So the, the darker bar is the end of the year, and then the light one is where they, that particular year started.
Is the beginning of the year, that's right, yep.
Those exact kids, like not grade two from last year, yes.
No, so the sheet you're looking for is same kids, yep.
Yeah, it's interesting, so the three or more grade levels below, or two or more grade levels below, like, when we're, well, I guess when you're in kindergarten, you can't be two or more levels below, maybe that's the answer, but like, really, like, there's no red up through grade two, and then it starts, and then you start getting some red and some red dashed lines in grade three. And what do you think that's about? Like, why, why are those, why can we not keep kids at, at grade level, starting at grade?
So, um, a lot of, a lot of reasons, and again, every year you have a different makeup of students. Our grade students.
Well, I guess that's one kid, right?
Right, yeah.
One kid is.
I don't have to break down by grade level, but, right, exactly.
But in grade three, one kid is two, well, and one kid is one behind, and the rest are.
Does that include kids at all levels of? Does that include kids at all levels of ability?
Every student, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
No, every student.
Really is like, when you look at the numbers, like suddenly the percentage go up when you have so many kids, all right, nevermind.
Right. Our teachers have done a good job. Using our Ready Math as the basis for providing instruction. No program is going to be perfect, you don't take out of the box and just start teaching, so. Our, and using our math intervention person this year in a variety of ways, I think, is moving us forward. Last year's fourth grade, this year's fifth grade, had some struggles with mathematics, continued making some progress. I'd like, I liked seeing the gain that they made from the beginning of the year in grade five. And if you look at our state testing scores, they dipped down, but they're really in line with the five-year averages for taking this assessment. That's just sheet.
Can I, like, if we're looking at grade five?
Right.
I mean, it does have the biggest percentage of students not at grade level as we send them to the middle school.
Right.
It's also the most complex learning, right? Like, the grade levels are more difficult, I would assume, as you're.
And I'm sure.
Yeah, but it still is the, we're still sending the biggest, like, we're, it's, we're, we're losing ground on grade level as we're heading to middle school.
So, and last year, it's that same group of students, not that grade level, but that same group of students that had the high percentage of.
So, yeah, that, well, that's why I started opening, because I wanted to look at last year's.
Right.
Grade five. Is it a grade five issue or a class?
Yeah, I think it's this population of students that have come up with the complexity, so. CMS understands where each student is, they've done a really good job with our transition. They added a component this year where each student had, each teacher did like a form which kind of broke down some needs. Their counselors came over several times to talk about that transition. So they have this data, they're going to make good choices about where students will be placed as far as math and the support they need. We're going to continue to look at data from the beginning of the school year to make decisions about how are we going to utilize math intervention? Whether it's for enrichment, or whether it's for remediation, or small group pull-out to support. I'd like to see a little bit more data, not just from our beginning, middle, and end-of-the-year diagnostics, but have even more conversations with our PLCs on how are things going from unit to unit? So we can kind of see, do we need to reteach something? Do we need to spend some more time on it? Our third graders did phenomenal on the state testing this year for math. Really fantastic, so the SAS scores you see are the school-wide scores for this year.
You have a breakdown by grade?
I don't have the breakdown by grade tonight, but what our parents are going to get is individual student reports on the last day of school.
And science is only fifth grade?
Science is only fifth grade, that's right.
Can we get a breakdown by grade? Do you have access to a breakdown by grade?
Yep, I can get that too.
Thank you.
Yep.
We always present that, usually in October, once public scores, scores from the SAS are unembargoed, then they compare it to the state.
Okay.
And then what we'll.
I was, I was curious if we were seeing that same like fifth grade cohort slump.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious, I mean, the math is, is relatively close, but the reading is a more significant drop.
Yeah.
Is that, is there a grade where that is happening?
No, I think that's pretty consistent throughout all three grades. We had an outrageous high score in grade five last year for ELA. It was like ninety-three percent.
Oh, so the last year's fifth graders were inflating the average.
Yeah, that, that eighty-something percent was probably in the top five elementary schools in the state last year. So, and again, we'd love to see that too, but that, setting that as the bar is, that's, that's a tough one. As Chris said, that the, the, the state averages are going to come out in the fall, so. But just preliminary numbers, I wanted to make sure you have those percentages so we could see the school-wide.
I don't, I don't, sorry. I was just gonna say, I don't want this to seem like a, like a criticism, because I think that what they're doing is great. I, I don't particularly like I-Ready, but I do think what the school does is great. But what, I'm, because I'm not really impressed with this I-Ready score, right? This says that only fifty percent of our kids are where they should be, which is at the end of grade, of their grade, right? They're at the end of the year and they should be at the end of grade level. Twenty, the twenty-five percent of them are early on in the grade level when they're about to finish the grade. And another twenty percent are below the grade level, so half of our kids are not where they're supposed to be according to I-Ready. Like, that is concerning to me. I don't know that I believe it.
Same conversation in the fall where I was, where the yellow.
The colors in the fall mean something different, right? Because of the yellow, you would say, okay, they should be either at the end of the grade before or the beginning of this, right?
The yellow, the yellow would be.
Appropriate.
That, that's where all of our students would be, because this is kind of an end-of-the-year kind of goal.
The yellow is where they should be.
In the fall.
Right.
The fall, right, so in the fall, we had seventy percent of kids in yellow, and, you know, so basically, we were like, we were where we should be with ninety-three percent of our kids. Now we're where we should be with only fifty-four percent of our kids.
So nine, so in theory, ninety-three percent should have made it to green at this point.
To green stripe. Green stripe, which is that they're at the end of the grade level, they're ready to move on to the next one. Or they're above the grade level, right? Mid or above grade level, they shouldn't be early on, like, when you're finishing fourth grade, you shouldn't be early on in fourth grade level. That's, that's what light green is. Like, I, I think that I-Ready's crap personally, but maybe.
The diagnostic or the, or the math?
The diagnostic.
The diagnostic, okay.
Like, I, I don't know, like, just like from personal, like, seeing my N of four at home, right? Like, I've had kids like get dumber from year to year in their I-Ready scores, and I'm like, I don't think you actually got dumber in this year, you know, after a year of school.
No, I don't, I don't.
Right, so I think that like part of it is like the way that it's tested, but I'm not sure how to.
I would, so, so I hear you, and I don't disagree. I, in, in, right, if we're talking about just our small ends, right? One of the things that I have seen is that the testing that I'm showing reflects what I'm being told by my students too. In lack of growth, and it's not here. Just for the record, but so, so to me, it, it does still show what, how things are being taught. I agree with you, I don't necessarily love it, but I mean, it's a way to provide some objective measures, right? For, for performance of your cohorts, in a way to look at sort of whether, and I guess the question, right, is, is it, is it where we, is it the teaching that we want to have happening? Right, I think we all agree, we don't want to teach to a test, and maybe not, we don't want to teach to this test at all, I don't know. But I have found it interesting, because I have seen lack of growth too, and I've had a lot of conversations about lack of growth. And some of that lack of growth does, there's explanations.
Like, this, you know, if you look at the reading one, like phonological awareness, perfect, right? I would, I would hope that the majority of them would be more like this, like the phonics, the high-frequency word, right? Most kids should be in the stripes, they should be ending the school year, a few are behind, right? But when you get down to like the overall, like in both of these, only fifty, according to this, only fifty-five percent of our kids are really moved, ready to move on to the next grade.
Yeah, the, and there's, first of all, only, the majority of our second graders, and then third, fourth, and fifth take this. This is not reflective of K and one, and it's not reflective of like over half of the students in the school. Because we haven't finished, just ninety-six students have taken the ELA out of two hundred and seventy-eight.
But even just if it's, if the count is ninety-six, half of the ninety-six.
I guess, my, my point is, I, I, it's nice to be like, oh, look how they moved from like one color to the other, but. And it is, it is some like objective data, which is nice, but I, I hope that.
We use a variety of things to see how we guide our instruction. We have to report out somehow.
Yeah.
Right, we have to report out somehow. Another nice measure I like to hear from is how are our, how are our students responding to instruction at the middle school? Are they prepared? Are they as prepared, more prepared?
Do you get that feedback?
Yes, we do get that feedback. I don't get a data input about how every town is doing.
Right.
Because I'm not trying to do this competitive comparison, but I want to make sure that, you know, if, if, if they're seeing a trend where Brentwood is not prepared for the work that's ahead of them, I would like to know that. So it's not the sense I've gotten from former administration or the current administration. So, I mean, and again, it's just another measure. Another one is the week-to-week conversations we have during PLCs about, I mean, if you could hear these teachers talking about how well they know each child and what they're going to do to make changes in their growth. It doesn't wait for this three-time-a-year independently taken assessment, where, you know, our students are used to having the supports they need to move forward with the work that they're doing. This is independent.
Right.
We turn it on, they get going. If I feel like doing it, I'm going to do it, if I don't feel like doing it, I'm not going to do it. If I do it in five minutes, or it takes me fifty minutes. You know, we encourage them to take their time, we encourage them to do all those different things, but, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm just trying to kind of say.
No, I mean, I guess, you know, the question though is, right, like, it does provide us objective feedback, but like, if it's not, if it's not aligned with what's happening in the classroom. And, and this isn't a spicy thing, like, is it the right, is it the right tool for the district?
Yeah, that's why.
Chris, I know how you feel about this, but, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, these are the questions.
That's why we decided to get a different diagnostic for K-one students for reading, because this doesn't make sense. You know what I'm saying?
Do you, when you look at our students at the end of this year, do you feel, and do the teachers feel that fifty-five percent are ready to move on? Or is that percentage not used? Like, that's, I think, the concern, like, is that what, you, you guys look at this and you're like, that's where we're at? Let's figure it out, or is that?
We always want to see one hundred percent of our students in the double stripes, you know what I'm saying? That's what we'd love to see on this diagnostic, but we're not going to see that. I'm sure there's no schools that are going to see that. But no, I don't think only fifty-five percent of our students are ready to jump to the next grade level, so I think that's the whole, that's the whole point of us trying to talk about competency-based model that students are moving forward when ready, but we still have grade levels, you know what I'm saying? So my second graders are turning into third graders, but not all third graders are built the same or are ready to tackle the same thing, but there's a place for them in that space. Because instruction is happening in a way where we're going to meet each student's needs. We want to see the progress, you know? But there's students, there's students that took our state testing that struggled with it. That they, it was, is extremely hard, so we want to put them in a positive environment so they can do their best. But they didn't, they didn't perform, not all students performed well in that assessment. But they're, that's not the only measure we're using to see what they need to improve, what kind of growth that they're doing. I wish I, I wish I had better data or other pieces of data to bring you besides.
I just wonder if maybe the, the like leveling that they're doing is not accurate, but the other, and you find this better than the STAR assessments that used to be done.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, because, and again, it's not, this is, this is a summative kind of report out. It's not like a, it's not one of those reports where I get a list of students that would need these four skills, it might be good to work with them together, and these three kids are ready to move on with this type of enrichment activity based on this report, so. Our teachers use a variety of other like math programs where they can get information about like how kids are doing with their math facts and put them in right groups for that.
Does I-Ready assessment data help teachers?
I think it does. Yeah, it, and again, it's not perfect, but I, it's the, from the tools we had compared to STAR, I think it's much better providing us.
The tools you need.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, it's kind of far between working with students that we get this information. We take it, we look at it, we have conversations, we make some groupings, okay? What's also valuable is we use a variety of things for students that get some enrichment or intervention too. So if the students are making good progress, they may not be put into that intervention, but this is three times a year, last time we did this was February, March, so. It's not some, it's not the world we live in all the time, because we need other pieces of information. I'm sure if I brought every teacher in here, they'd tell you about how they know how their students are making progress.
It's not standardized tests?
No. Not. It might be Dan's favorite thing.
No.
No, okay.
But I, I do like that, that does give you options to look in and see a student's. You know, it breaks things down for you into chunks, and you can go in and kind of see what, what they're doing in the classroom, what I can report outside of the classroom.
So it might be more useful like on an individual basis than looking at the school as a whole?
I think it's useful to see and like, and to see that there's progress being made. I, it just, it annoys me this, this like rating, like, these kids are at.
Yeah.
About at mid-grade level, you know, like, it seems versus early grade level, like, it's, it's, it's like, it's, if, I know it's not true, so it's not really that upsetting, but it would be upsetting if it was like, and here you are at the end of the year, like, half of your kids are ready to go on, you know?
Well, not even that, arguably, mid-grade level is behind.
Right, yeah, I mean, mid and above grade level should be two different things at the end of the year.
I think if you looked at kids individually, you would see that a lot of those kids that were at mid-level may have been lower when they started in the fall.
Sure.
Yeah.
So they are making progress, but they're not making it.
I mean, I personally like this better, I find this more valuable as a parent than, than the report cards, so.
Yeah, and like each thing, it's like the inverse of the beginning of the year, like, even if the numbers aren't the percentage, like, they're off, they're like.
But there's. It's growth.
Growth. They're flipped, so there is growth.
Yeah, it's growth.
All right, good, now that we've beaten that horse.
Do you have more policies, Brian?
Please, more policies, no.
Did you have other things, you had other stuff, you had fun stuff on your report.
It's, you know what, somebody said, some first graders are getting sad already thinking that it's the end of the year, and, you know, the teacher's so good about reminding them, guess what? When you walk by, you get to say hello to me every single day, because you're moving from this classroom to the year. So it's not a goodbye forever, but I think we're, I think we're all in that place where we're getting ready to say goodbye for the summertime, it's time to do some celebrating. We've already had a good month or a few weeks of celebrating a lot of people's efforts, you know? Our teachers, our staff, our community for supporting our school, you know, Chris, the SAU, the school board, so. So celebrating a good year, it's been a positive year, it's been a definitely positive year for me, I've had a great year, it's just been my favorite year. And I just like, I like the climate of our building, it feels good, you know, so I want to keep that going.
Awesome.
Yeah.
What, so you have some people leaving?
We have three paraprofessionals that are leaving, so we'll be hiring.
And so Rachel is the math integrationist this year, yeah?
Yes, we posted that position, and I have somebody who's going to be taking that position.
Oh, cool.
In-house, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. So it'd be replacing that person.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
So that, that's going to stay in place.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And then Kathy Underwood's going.
Yeah.
Yeah. She has littles at home, huh?
Yeah, there's a variety of stuff, but you'd believe me, it's not what I want, it's, she's, you know, ready for that next thing. Yeah, there's a variety of stuff, but you'd believe me, it's not what I want. It's, she's, you know, ready for that next thing. And so it's just finding a partner for our office.
Yeah.
That'll be good. She's amazing.
She is really amazing.
Yeah.
I, I never feel bad when I've made really stupid parenting things.
Yeah.
She's sorry, this is the fourth Monday in a row I forgot to send a stack.
It's never stupid. It's what we do.
I am here again.
No, no, she's, she is very chill and it's, it's good to have the Kathleen Ying, Tracy Yang thing going on in our office. I've said it before. You know, it just works so good, so.
She'll be missed.
Oh, she'll be missed.
Is that job posted?
Say it again.
Is that job posted?
Oh, yeah.
Where, where did they post?
At the SAU. It's the SAU website. Yeah. Are you applying?
No, I, I was gonna share, I was gonna share and be like, hey.
Please.
But I didn't know where.
And uh, the other question that I had was, um I know a conversation was had about staying at El Noba this year, but is there any way we could like collect community data on desires for El Noba versus Sergeant Camp? Or is Sergeant Camp just gone?
When you say community, what do you mean?
Parents and kids.
If you direct us to do anything, we'll do it. I just.
I would imagine that as there, as there are less and less parents who have the comparison, it will be harder.
Right, it's super hard. But so, so this is the one feedback I've never experienced Sergeant Camp, so I don't. I mean, you ha, you guys both probably experienced Sergeant Camp, but this is the one comment that I, that I've heard from people who did experience Sergeant Camp was that like, there was like this major, major growth that happened when kids, a lot of kids for the first time, it was the first time that they ever went away for that sort of length of time. And that, at the end of that week, their kids, for the first time, had, had to do their hair and had to decide that, that actually they really did need to eat their breakfast and nobody like it was just this like major, and I've heard this from a number of parents, that like the, the kids came home, they felt so much more confident that they were ready to go to middle school, like ready to like make more decisions for themselves. Um, and that kids who haven't got to go have lost that.
Yeah.
And I think that that's, like, I totally agree with you. The more years we go without going, the more parents don't have a comparison. And I kind of hate that.
So um, the important part of this is the other schools and what they're thinking and what they're feeling. So maybe collectively, we could all decide to kind of um, consider it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Like doing a survey just for Brentwood isn't enough.
Yeah, no, no, I wasn't talking about just for Brentwood. Like as a district, can we look at?
Yeah.
It's where each board's at, you know, because other, one of the other boards I've worked with, it's, you know, the cost comparison. You know, this is a much cheaper cost. Staffing to have people go there and liability with kids at camps for a long time has been a major concern with the board.
And because there's been problems?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, half, half of East Kingston got put in the hospital this year, didn't they?
I have no idea.
I think there were some serious problems.
I would go back to what's our purpose of, of this?
Yeah.
Is our purpose to get kids ready for middle school and being independent? Or is our purpose to bring kids together in some type of learning environment? Because they're going to start being in the same class together as graduates in seven years, right? And that was how this has been proposed to me when I started here, that we do this because we bring our kids and then we forget two of our big elementary schools, they're not part of it. So
Right.
I even question that. So I think it's a great conversation.
Yeah.
And I would be glad to have it with principals, but I would, I would have much, I would rather have a much defined purpose of why we're doing this.
Why you're doing it, right? What is the purpose? I mean, I guess.
Who's going to do that facilitation, right? Because even when we looked at it, they weren't fully staffed to be able to do Sergeant Camp, even if we were ready to go back there, so.
Sergeant Camp was right, wasn't fully staffed.
We've had to really look at who can staff to do these activities of team building and collaboration, you know?
And there's no location that could, that could have like a full class, like the, the big schools too. I agree, like the point is to like get kids together. It's like, well, let's get some of the kids together.
It's usually.
Well, I mean, it was the idea originally, right, was that the small school, the big schools knew so many kids going in, but I don't know. I mean, it just seems like, it seems as a district, and, and whether it belongs in fifth grade or not, I, I don't know the answer to, but it seems like as a district, a lot of those like big experiences have gone away. And other schools are doing them still. I mean, I have friends whose sixth graders go away for a week. I have friends whose eighth graders go to DC for, I mean, it's like at different places, but it just seems that we've pulled back from all of it in all places. Like, you know, there's no trips in the middle school. The fifth graders don't go away anymore, like it just, it seems to be a shame to me. And I don't know where the right place is in it, and I think you're right. What is the, what's the objective of the trip? I would love for it to be the real one, personally.
I only know Sergeant Camp. Soon I will also know whatever you're going to decide to do in two years.
But, and so you had a Sergeant Camper and you had a non-Sergeant Camper.
I had a Sergeant Camper and a Coveter.
And a Coveter, right. And you did too.
Uh, no, they went to El Noba.
El Noba, right, right. So you had both comparisons.
Yeah.
So you had both.
Yeah.
Are we good? Done?
We're, well, we're not done.
We had non-public.
Mm-hmm, we have non-public. So, does anybody have anything else, old business? So um, we need to go into non-public under, oh, I didn't print the back page off.
A and, A and C.
A and C.
And if you want to talk about the safety plan, I as well.
Sure.
All right.
So A, C and I.
All right. So does anybody want to make that motion?
Thank you.
To make a motion that we go into
Thank you.
public under ninety-one A dash or colon three two dots A, C and I.
Second.
Roll call.
I.
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 Hi.
Thank you.